So, Don, there is need sense if you guys get to a right point that makes sense. There's salad and stuff.
Okay, do we want to do this? Let's see, do we get through? Do you want to try to just get through the land use development code update? Or you want it right before that?
It's up to you, a few, whatever seems like a good stopping point. We'll probably have a lot of people waiting for that SBR discussion, I'm guessing. But also try to grab something and see that you're ready to respond if that's comfortable or not.
Okay, um, let's see how the first part goes. We should go through the second. And then. Does Jane have any idea how long the presentation went on?
About maybe twenty, twenty-five minutes.
Okay, then we can probably get right through that. For sure, only maybe.
Recording in progress.
Okay, my computer says five o'clock. Okay, now it doesn't. So, let's go ahead and call this meeting to a halt. And if you hear a call or a bell.
Mayor Walker?
Here.
House member for Don. Here, DeGraff?
Here.
You guys?
Here.
Pierce?
Here.
Pitcher?
Here.
Posey?
Here.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for being here, including members of our public who decided to join us in person. We love having you in person. We have enough of this room, so. Anyway, if you please stand with me and we're trying to defend you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we're just standing, under our nation, under God, and under the principle of liberty and justice.
To introduce them all with silence. The thought about truth and how difficult it is nowadays to try to sort through all the information and come to some sort of truth. And it has been a problem all throughout history, I guess. And there was a guy who was accused of at least one capital crime that came before a Roman ruler. And they were the only ones who could go ahead and execute people in this particular area. And the ruler questioned this guy, and he didn't say a lot. He did say a few things, but toward the end of the questioning, the person who was accused had said something, and the ruler came back and said, "Well, what is truth?" Good question. Truth isn't always just right there apparent. It's not always on the surface. You've got to start digging a little bit to find it. And any of you who follow cop shows and detective shows and murder mysteries, you know, you know that they're always looking for evidence. They're looking for credible evidence, testimonial and credible physical evidence. And so, I think the reason I bring this up is because, you know, we're entering a new season. We're going to have some changes on council. And it's going to be interesting. And I would, I would really encourage everyone to go ahead, leaders of the community, council, staff, and also public, to really try to search out truth. And about the only way you are going to be able to get close to it is if you ask good questions and participate. Otherwise, you know, you'll just believe what you want to believe. We all do, that's natural. So, seeking truth, hmm. So, let's take a moment of silence and direct our prayers, our meditations, our thoughts towards seeking truth as we go through this meeting. Again, thank you so much for being here, guys. Again, I use guys for everybody. I probably should. Anyway, public comment. Just remind you that we do accept public comment before and after the meeting. If there are items on the agenda, there are ordinances, we will take comment during those discussions, okay? Otherwise, if you have a comment about almost anything concerning the town, you're welcome to speak. And we'd like you to keep it to just a few minutes and be concise in case anybody else wants to speak. So, does anybody want to make public comment at the beginning?
Is this for, well, is this for sanitation or council?
This is council.
Okay, all right.
So, okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
Just name, and that's all you need to say.
Okay.
And make sure that April gets that.
All right, my name is Bethany Jones, and I'm an entrepreneur, a business owner, a certified self-talk trainer, previously a teacher, and currently a homeschool mom. I am not a resident of the town, however, we spend a great deal of time and money in the town of Pogosa Springs, and we are residents of Archuleta County. I'm here tonight to express my concern and bring your attention as our public servants to what is happening in our town regarding the San Juan Basin of public health. By now, I'm sure you all have heard about the Junior Heroes Contest that San Juan Basin Health has put forth to the community and actively in-person promoted in our public high school, which is in the town. I'm not here to argue about whether COVID is real or not, whether masks work or not, or whether the vaccine is effective or not. I've done my research and have strong conclusions on these things, but above all, I believe in personal freedom as provided by our constitution. I believe that the people of Archuleta County greatly value their constitutional freedoms, including freedom of speech without discrimination. So, so much that at the August seventeenth Board of County Commission meeting, we witnessed our commissioners signing a reaffirmation of the constitution to uphold these rights. Permitting this contest in our county is a gross negligence of this. Here are just a couple of reasons why our public officials need to be aware. In order to be accepted to qualify to enter this Junior Heroes Contest, we pay $100, minors ages twelve to seventeen must abide by contest rules, which include using their personal social media accounts to promote what San Juan Basin Public Health deems appropriate. As a mom, huge problem with that. You can only imagine what and who will be tracking these kids now. Do we want this in our town and in our county? As the rule states, and I quote, "You may enter why you, your family, and/or your friends choose to become vaccinated, or why you feel COVID-19 vaccination is important." One student asked, and I spoke directly with him, if he was allowed to present other perspectives, such as the research risks involving with children and the vaccine. The answer was no, you must follow the contest rules. This is clearly a restriction of free speech and discrimination in nature. I'm here to ask you why we are allowing this in our town and in our county. I am asking you as our public servants to pursue and support the removal of Archuleta County and the town of Pogosa Springs from under the heavy hand of San Juan Basin Public Health. I think we would all agree far and wide that the majority of our county and our town does not echo the values of La Plata, and this collaboration needs to be stopped. We are counting on our elected officials to do the right thing and to stand to uphold our constitutional rights, including free speech and no discrimination for any reason. I'm asking what will you, as the leadership of our town, do about this? I'm hoping that there's no more passing off responsibility. The town is in the county. We need all of you to work together. We need and expect our town leadership to rise up now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make public comment? I see no hands raised, so we'll go on down to our consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that council members would like to have taken off and further discussion? If not, the chair will accept the motion. Go ahead, Ben.
Mayor, I need to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion in a second. We need to take a little poll, please.
House member for Don, and DeGraff?
Aye.
You guys?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Pitcher?
Aye.
Posey?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Okay, let's go on down to reports to council. And the first one is lodger's tax brief. Is Jenny joining us? There she is, for smiling face. Okay, kiddo, you're on.
Um, so I'll keep this very short this evening. I'm not feeling well, so I'd rather not talk too much anyway, but I guess the good news that I included in the report, we've received a few weeks ago, a lot of signage that will be installed as soon as snow melts. This includes the York Trail signage for Reservoir Hill, Dakota Springs, Turkey Springs, as well as very large kiosk signage throughout Turkey Springs, and then some additional parks signage that his team will be utilizing across downtown. So, very excited about that. The lengthy project works, and nice to see it finally under permission. I guess getting them installed will actually bring it to permission. And then the last piece, I highlighted some of the results of 2021 holiday festivities that we helped along with a lot of volunteers organized. And I just wanted to, not going to read all of the volunteers' names individually, but I just wanted to thank all of the volunteers that took to pull off the inaugural whole fashion Christmas celebration. It was a wonderful event, and I believe there's at least fifty names listed there, plus all of the different groups and organizations that adopted segments. So, this was a great community event, and we were just very excited with the volunteer support that we received. It's one of those that obviously took the village fully after. So, with that, I will answer any questions you guys have and let you get back to your meeting if not.
I do have one question. I thought that the activities around the Christmas activities were awesome, but have you guys decided to, or have you already got together to do a debrief? Just see what we can do next year? Thank you. That's all we need.
Yep, we had a meeting last Thursday, and actually as a result of that, we have sent out a survey to all of the groups and organizations that adopted segments, and we've gotten thirteen responses from those. And so far, every one of the groups would participate again. So, I think that's a good indication, and we will bring the survey results back to the planning committee and adopt whatever changes we can. But, yeah, we've already begun working on next year's event, which I guess I'll go ahead and mention, we're planning for December seventeenth. So, if anyone can help give us the perfect weather, perhaps not sub-zero temperatures, that would be wonderful.
Well, thank you, Jen. Any other questions for Jane? Anything? Okay, well, thank you so much. Let's go on down to the sales tax brief. Andrea?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, town council. This report represents sales tax information for November twenty twenty-one. The town and county sales tax receipts for the month were $1,328,089. That is an increase of nine point seven percent compared to the same month in November twenty twenty. The town's share of that is $663,125, divided equally between our general fund and capital improvement fund, with $331,562 going to each. We are going to end the year meeting or exceeding our revised projection. If you recall, we did increase that projection at the time that we introduced the 2022 budget. So, we are looking very good for the remainder of 2021.
Thank you. Any questions, Andrea? Well, I have good news, I feel pretty consistent. I don't know if you can continue that or not.
I'll do my best, Mayor.
Okay, so, I want to encourage, on the website, we have other department reports that are put in every month for the departments. And there's a lot of good information in there. So, if you have any questions about what the town is doing, the project that we're working on currently, what future projects we're looking at, I would strongly recommend if you go over the website. Lots of information in there. Okay, let's go on down to unfinished business. And so, we've been working on the land use development code for how long, James?
I think we're getting close to a year now.
Getting close to a year. So, go ahead and introduce this, and then I think we've got a couple of guests who have been actually doing the footwork herself. Go ahead, Jane.
Thank you, Mary. So, land use development code, starting with, we've been actively working with our consultants, Lord and Citizen, and town staff discussing removing updates to land use development code. Next year, committee meeting is expected to be, or is scheduled to be, Wednesday, February the second. And that's expected to be the last land use development code steering committee meeting, unless there's a meeting that arises that dictates that meeting again to discuss proportions in the future for advice and input. We recently updated land use dot org with some information requesting public comments on some of the code sections. I want you to be aware that we're bringing more of those sections into their future for additional public comments. And we are coordinating an in-person and virtual public open house in early March to review the new code, make sure we address any community concerns, before bringing it to the planning commission for recommendation and town council for consideration of doubting the new code. Jen Gardner is providing some of the details this evening. And can I hand over her for her to review the current status that, where the code is currently, and review the list of substantial changes that we're looking at, including each article. So, if this is not what you have to hand over to Jen, if you can hear me, Jen?
I think you're in, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Love it when technology works. I'm going to go ahead and share my screening and share a little powerpoint that you guys can follow along. So, I'm going to go over a brief bit of process of the meeting, how we reorganized the code, and then, like Jane said, walk through some of the specific changes in each of the articles and some quick next steps. So, as Jane's already kind of indicated, but I'll walk through this really quickly. We did kick off the project about a year ago. With us, staff kicked off in our first steering committee meeting. I believe we've had thirteen or fourteen steering committee meetings in the last year. That's an impressive number, and I do want to thank the steering committee members for their, for speaking with us through the process. They've been a really great resource. We had our first public open house in February, March, and April. We did stakeholder outreach. We reached out to about fifty different people in the community and had one-on-one and small group conversations with them. Really had a lot of great conversations that were carried through into some of the, a lot of the code changes. We had a working questionnaire that went out in April. We finished our assessment report in May. And then June through now, we've been meeting with the steering committee and updating different sections of the code kind of systematically throughout the whole last several months. We are trying to finish up our last draft right now, actually, and should have, as Jane said, the next section posted to the website for public review very shortly. And then we'll have the final section posted mid-February in preparation for those open houses in March. So, just to have a brief overview, this table kind of walks through a little bit of reorganization. Articles one, two, and three, and four, we made names as they were. We did combine non-conformities from Article Nine into Article One. We removed annexation, the procedures for annexation moved up Article Two, other application procedure, and all checklist items were removed for the, to be moved into users' manuals where all the other checklist items are. Impact fees were removed, definitions, remains. So, basically, you end up with eight articles instead of thirteen to condense the view. Resort preservation moved up into Article Five, dimensional standards moved over to the zoning districts where, with their corresponding language. So, anyway, that just kind of gives a brief overview of some of the reorganization that wasn't, overall heavy reorganization. Like I said, a lot of this stayed fairly similar to what we did, which contains around to combine different language for consistency and clarity. Then Article One is your general provisions. Generally, we've simplified language throughout, trying to reduce any redundancies. If there was a, you know, sometimes there was repetition, and we just cleared that up. If there were three sentences that basically could be said with one, we tried to simplify that. We added specific intent language regarding housing options. So, at the very beginning of the chapter, there's a purpose and intent statement for the whole code. And we just tuned that up to reflect the comprehensive plan and criticals of the community. We're reading the waivers and amendments section to authority of the town council and streamlined the text. It was, there was some confusion between it being called waivers and the actual process of waivers and waivers. Anyway, so we cleaned that up to make it a little bit more clear what the intent of that section was. We renamed the conflicting provisions section to state that it's related to other regulations. And so, there's comparisons to other regulations and how they relate to the code. We moved, like I said before, Article Nine, non-conformities into this section, so that it's right up front. Changed some of the language in the non-conformities. There was one section where if a structure was to be replaced, right now it's based on replacement cost, and we changed that to fifty percent and we grew square footage of the structure to make that a little bit more simple to calculate. And then we removed the references to members, funding commission, and town council members terms of office. Those will just go in the operations manuals. They didn't necessarily need to be codified, so those can be adjusted and altered over time a little easier. Article Two, application procedures, the event procedures for amendments to the land use code, that wasn't in the code, so we made that clear. Updated titles in the summary table procedures to match text throughout. The biggest change in this chapter was we removed the flow charts. Those are going to go in the users' manuals so that they can, where they're a little bit easier to understand. And we reduced repetition. So, in each application process, we have kind of overall application process in your code now that goes through the steps, and then those were repeated in each application process. And so, we basically just stated, follow the basic application procedures with the following changes. And if there were specific changes for a specific application, we called those out. We also clarified in the application review procedures that there's, one of the steps was for planning director review of application, and we clarified that that is to be, give that the director ample time to review the applications and work with the applicants to amend plans before advertising appearance. Article Three, zoning districts, there were not a lot of changes to this. We didn't add any zoning districts particularly or change any zoning districts graphically. We just updated the descriptions for clarity. The only thing we added was a put built over rates of district based on the comprehensive standards and included a description and associated dimensional standards. Like I said before, we did bring all the dimensional standards, but we're in Article Six into this chapter, so it's very clear when you're reading through your zoning districts, you see what the description is, what your setbacks and height limitations and those things are right in one section together. We also incorporated the recently adopted density bonus policy in a couple of sentences in this section. The use regulations, not a lot of changes in here either. The biggest changes were incorporating accessory and temporary uses into the use table, updating, updating the terminology throughout. We did move the definitions from the definition article up into this section, the definitions that are related to each use, so that you can read the use table, see where, you know, if you're looking for what uses are allowed in a particular commercial district, you read down and you see which uses are allowed, and then you can go directly below that and see what the definition is for that use, and then any standards for that use. We did add some standards for shipping containers. We had quite a few people mention that throughout our whole process, using shipping containers for construction, adding some standards for that. And also highlighted housing options with some new graphics. So, right up front in the chapter, there's a couple of new graphics that talk about the variety of housing options that are available to really frontload that, that you know, you don't have to just do a single family home or duplex or multi-family home. There's lots of other housing options that are contemplated in this code. Resort preservation hasn't seen a lot of change at the moment. It's general cleanup and clarification. We haven't heard really much throughout this whole process about any substantive changes to that section, so it largely is remaining the same. Development standards, Article Six, there are three slides on this one. I'll just kind of pick and choose a few of these so we can get through it a little quicker, but it didn't see the biggest amount of changes, but it also is the largest section by far. So, we tried to reduce the language anywhere that we could and simplify language. We streamlined purpose and intent statements, so each subsection had a purpose or intent statement. We tried to really condense those down, which would just be really succinct. There's an alternative compliance section that we had heard from a few people was a little bit unclear, so we tried to clarify that process and language. We removed redundant language from the flood damage prevention regulations. The sensitive area protection section is one of the areas that we heard a lot about from stakeholders and public feedback, that we reached out that section quite a bit. So, there were a couple of subsections in that section that were kind of condensed a lot of changes into one, and we broke those out to have specific macro habitat features sections, while then in right area protections, which has quite a bit of new language, the nursery protection section, scenic features and vistas, and then we added wildlife hazard area language to help define some defensible space. We added a whole new section on alternative energy and green infrastructure, which includes a sustainable site improvement menu of options that's based on a point system. So, for commercial properties and multi-family properties, there was certain point requirement, and there's several options that have different point values that you can choose to meet that point system. So, the roadway classification system, there was some inconsistencies between terminology with arterial and collector road, so we just cleaned up the language in that section. We provided some, many, many graphics throughout this section. So, one of the new graphics was the clear sidelines language and driveway widths have new graphics associated with those to help illustrate the language. In the roadway classification table, it lists different driveway widths and street widths, and the sidewalk line item just said yes, yes, no, so it was, you know, you required to have a sidewalk or not. We added actual width requirements for each of the zone districts for that section. We actually tooled up the commercial mixed use design standards quite a bit. We renamed commercial mixed use design standards to just non-residential. So, you have residential or non-residential now. And then buried within that non-residential, there were standards for the East Village, O'Leary, and downtown business and lodging district overlay, and they, we pulled them out kind of separately, so they each have their own subsections, so it's a little more clear what we do in each of those long districts. We replaced all of the images in that section with graphics to illustrate the concepts and edited language throughout. There was a lot of very design guideline oriented language, like we encourage and we should do this. We clarified that language to be more shells and specific dimensions to be. We clarified that language to be more shells and specific dimensions to be much more succinct on what was required. We added electric vehicle charging spaces, micro mobility hubs and ride shared parking to the parking and loading section. Added graphics to illustrate parking dimensional standards, added reference to zero escape design principles, and we developed a suggested plan list that will live outside of the code but is referenced within the code, and we're working with a local landscape architect to fine tune that list. We've added some planning specifications, we've signed the tree preservation standards, commercial landscape standards, a little more specific on parking modeling, speaking and buffer yard requirements. The landscape section was very minimal, current, is currently very minimal, so we just tried to add some more specificity to that section to help preserve and enhance landscapes. We updated the sign code to be consistent with content neutral case law, so there's a chunk of the, the code that comes out, get replaced with more simplified language based on First Amendment, you know, freedom of speech and content neutrality. We did reduce the maximum size allowed for freestanding signs in a couple of zoning districts. Added graphics to illustrate sign measurements. And then there were sign films, referencing the code currently, but there was no description of where those sign films were, so we added the descriptions for those sign films and a table clarifying the dimensional standards for sign heights in each of those zoning districts. And then we moved the school and movie section to Article Seven with the subdivision regulations. In addition to moving the school and movie to subdivisions, we generally simplified language. This is a very, a fairly short section, and we primarily had to edit the conservation subdivision section to provide clarity and detail compliance criteria. And last but not least, the definitions. We removed, like I said earlier, the definitions of the use and some placed them in Article Four with the rest of the use standards. We've removed any standards from the definitions, so if a definition was defining an item and then also had some particular use standards related to it, we've moved those to the appropriate chapters. And we are working on defining any new terms that we've introduced, removing any terms that are no longer applicable, and updating outdated definitions. So that is in a nutshell what we have been doing over the last year with the code, and like I said, most of that is already written. We're going through staff review with a couple of sections, and we have one more steering committee going through the last couple of sections. And then Module One is currently available on MacPagosa.org, and that contains Articles One, Two, and Three. So your general provisions, application procedures, and for some reason the other one is looking my mind. Module Two will be posted here very shortly, and then Module Three will be up in early to mid-February ahead of those open houses expected in March. And that is all I have for you today, so if you have any questions, I'll, I'll stick around.
Questions? Lots of info. Any questions?
Go ahead, Jim. I just want to make a comment. I've been heavily involved with this since, since before the beginning, since before we decided to do this. And I, I just want to point out, when I talk to citizens, that's one of the most common references I hear is property rights, property rights. This is the definition, the land use code is the definition of your property rights within this town. And, and so if you're interested in property rights, I really hope you attend these open houses, go to MacPagosa.org, look at this material, because we, we want and need your input. We can't figure this all out on our own, and that's what we've been doing. So if, if anybody out there has any good ideas based on the material you see out there, we need to hear them, because this is a, this is a definition of your property rights. Also, even though we just went through a lot of material, this is not a radical change in, in, in the property rights definition of the land use code, but it's a fair, it's a pretty significant reorganization and simplification. Poor Jim, I mean, I hammered on her every meeting, say this in fewer words. Can you say this in fewer words? And I would give examples, you could see one sentence here instead of three until I'm sure she got really tired of me. But, but the net effect is we have something that removes the obstacles of potential misunderstanding from this, and, and we've, we've paid a lot of attention to that. We've worked really hard to, to streamline this, to make it easier for everybody to use. And I, I really hope you'll take the time to come take a look. If there's any particular part of property rights that, that you're interested in, come search for it in the code, find it, and discuss it with us. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just support that. If you can get involved, that'd be great. James?
Appreciate it. And Jim mentioned earlier, but we really appreciate the dedication of the steering committee. It's been no small task. It could be multiple times, reading lots of texts and commenting and, and just reviewing and discussing and debating some of these in our steering committee meetings. So their, their, their time commitment to this project has been immense, so I really appreciate it. All the steering committee members have been pointed to this task, so thanks to all of them.
And we appreciate the folks that we've hired to lead the charge and keep all this stuff organized and moving along, so thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
It's my pleasure. It's been a real pleasure working on this project, and I'm excited to be moving into the final phase. And like Jeff said, please, please, please come, anyone in the public, please come look at the document. We do want, we do want feedback. That's what makes this project great, so thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anything else before she signs off? Okay. Thanks again.
Thanks, guys. Bye, see you later.
Okay. New business, personnel handbook amendments. Kathy?
So I'm basically just bringing some housekeeping updates to our personal handbook based on some of the changes that occurred, some changes from my updates. Initial one is our flex spending account is not meant to be offered anymore, just because there was a lot of interest in that. So we're promoting to remove that from the handbook. Also, in 2021, council approved a two percent discretionary contribution, employer contribution to the employees. They contributed additional amount to the 157, and just updating that section on the policy manual to incorporate that change. And then the big one here is that we're replacing our personal time exception to make it compliant with the Colorado Healthy Families and Workplace Act, which requires that employers pay or give all employees working minimum of one hour of safe time for every thirty hours' work. So regardless of where you're full-time, part-time, seasonal, you record games, you know, officiate, things like that, we have to track and provide some help for employees. So we are required to modify that section of the policy to be compliant with the Colorado State laws on that. So that's essentially what we did, you know, to make it compliant is to reference the Healthy Families Act, our PTO. The town does not separate vacation and sick leave. We have a personal time off, and so we basically modified that policy to incorporate part-time and seasonal on all our employees and tracking how we can use that benefit. So, any questions?
Questions for Kathy? Clay, I assume that you were involved in this issue?
I was not this year.
You were not? You let Kathy answer. Okay.
We, that's nice of you to say, but we also contract with Employers Council, which specializes in human resource law, and so they follow all this employment a lot. Specifically, we've been contracting with them probably for about four to five years now. So Clay's got lots to do, so we've, we've employers council for this. This is a pretty standard policy from them as it was implemented with pretty much every employer.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good work. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on now to ordinance nine sixty-nine.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we do. Okay. Go ahead, make a motion, Maddie.
I move to approve the recommended changes to Sections three oh four, three oh eight, and four oh one of the first handbook.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion, second roll call.
Ms. Member, we're gone. Aye. DeGrasse?
Aye.
Guys?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Picture?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, good catch, Maddie. Now we're going down to ordinance nine sixty-nine, first reading, vacating Whispering Pines Phase eleven flat and development improvement agreement. James?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I ask if you have to give a phone?
What's her name?
June or Ken? Direct? June or? Here, here.
Okay, I'm looking here, June or? Or what's her name?
Direct. Last is the direct.
So would you like to raise your hand if you're on here?
If Ken or June are, intended to raise your hand, they were not sure if it would be in that sense. But I'll move on while they.
It doesn't look like it, but there is a call number, wouldn't you want to?
So we received a application, a request in the vacation of Whispering Pines Phase eleven flat and the associated development improvement agreement. This property is located, it's not addressed currently, but is located southwest corner of Eaton Drive and Park Avenue, known as Whispering Pines eleven. This project was approved back in, I guess it was recorded in two thousand and eight, and since then, the bank had taken the property back, the town had released the bonding. However, the current property owner would like to move forward to vacating the flat, which does plat out forty-seven townhome units and a development improvement agreement. And in essence, development improvement agreement is generally void anyway because we returned bond, and so those, those were public improvements and, or private improvements that did install. And I believe the town released the bonding back in two thousand and nine? No, I bet it was two thousand and ten approximately. So in essence, what would occur with vacating this flat, it would revert back to the parcels prior to this plat being recorded. Townhome flats are, I'll just expand on this a little bit. Townhome flats are a little odd piece because of the previous way they were accepted and then recorded with the accessory office and the clerk's office and so on. When you go to the R T A S map, town map, it brings up this property, and it has forty-eight some townhome units plaid on this, but it's not property you can necessarily develop without the development improvement agreement and the associated bonding. So it kind of misrepresents the property status when you work with that map. We're finding, we're looking at other ways to record the concept plan with the I A preferably instead of having it actually recorded as a flat, which really, again, in CineWay says ready to be sold and developed, but there's, there's a process to go through when that property gets developed. Maybe designer review, major subdivision process, development agreement, all that to say. Having a plaid like this has been a cumbersome issue with property owner because they're being taxed, they're being assessed fees for, for those legs, property owners' situation for all forty-eight units. So annually, it becomes a big tax burden, and the current owner has no intention of developing the property as it is currently plaid. So again, vacating the plat would revert the properties back to their legal status prior to this recorded plat. And vacating the development improvement agreement would just release an obligation from records of this property. Any new development would have to go through the full process, right? Have to go through major subdivision and major designer review process, which would trigger the development improvement agreement. And at that time, we would identify the appropriate easements, whether they're for pedestrian easements, whether they're for utilities, roadways internal to the development, whether they're going to be public or private. All that's figured out when we get the next development application for these properties or combined as one property. I had started presenting this at the last meeting before the year that went out, so I feel compelled to kind of explain a little bit, because since that meeting, the owner has provided, has reconsidered his position on retaining some of the easements that are plaid on Phase, Whispering Pines Phase eleven flat. So vacating that plat also releases those easements as well, they're vacated, those You know, we, we were pursuing it as an opportunity, hey, let's, let's grab these easements while we can. We've got the property owner getting, he's willing to sign those easements. In the end, I guess from a status perspective, the property doesn't really matter much, because in the end, when the property does get developed, we will, we will dedicate those easements for public benefit at that time based on that development plan. The easements that are currently plaid on Phase eleven flat are easements that were contemplated and associated with that specific plat. And it's probably more appropriate to look at the next development plan that comes along and identify the public and private easements for that property. So I wanted to clarify that a little bit since we went into that detail at your last meeting, but the property owner has reconsidered his position and is asking for the entire plat to be released without the dedication of any easements that are associated with that plat. I did make a list of easements that were previously dedicated prior to the Whispering Pines Phase eleven. Those easements will be retained. Those are still active easements and not to be released. Those are still dedicated easements. Those are all in your staff report. On December the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, planning commission did approve recommendation for town council approved the vacation of Whispering Pines Phase eleven flat due to development flats and found, and included a recommendation retaining the temporary easements associated with the pedestrian walkway and public utilities. At that time, with the planning commission had considered this, the property owner was receptive to the idea of dedicating those easements back to the town, but like I mentioned, he has reconsidered that. We've got to set up a poll for any questions.
Questions for James? Go ahead, Jim.
I just want, it's redundant perhaps, because you've already said it, but I just want to make sure there's no loss of value to the town by allowing these easements to go, that the, the owner has changed his mind to not offer those easements. Do you believe, in your best judgment, there's no loss of value to the town in allowing him to do that?
Yeah, I believe there's not. You're really the ones who are trying to, you're going to try retaining the walkway easement along Eaton Drive, which is on this property. But the reality, if we want to pursue a walkway, there's plenty of right way, it's right that other way outside of this property boundary. The other easement we were going to try to negotiate was currently one of these properties, and it's a property on the corner of Village and Florida Park and Eaton Drive. The temporary easement along Eaton and the temporary easement along Park Avenue are dedicated specifically to parks instead of a general public utility easement. We're just going to ask if we can keep that and convert it to a general public utility easement. Again, we can get the secure one in the next development comes along, so I don't think there's loss of value there.
Thank you.
Other question for Kathy?
It was asked me to read the title from the record.
Any discussion on this before I open up the public comment?
James said he needs to read the title for the record.
Thank you, James. I missed that.
Is it ordinance of the town of Rosa Springs? Is it ordinance number nine sixty-nine? An ordinance of the town of Rosa Springs, vacating Whispering Pines Townhomes Phase eleven flat, number eight seven six eight, eight seven six B, eight seven six C, and associated development improvement agreement. This is first reading.
Thank you, James. Okay, any discussion on this before I turn it over? Okay, I'm going to open this up for public comment. Would anybody like to make public comment on this issue? Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so chair will entertain a motion on this ordinance. Go ahead, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the first reading ordinance nine six nine, vacating Whispering Pines Phase eleven flat and associated development improvement agreement.
Second. Got a motion, a second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Member, we're gone. Aye.
Aye. DeGraff?
Aye.
DeGuys?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Pitcher?
Aye.
Posey?
Aye.
Mayor Holder?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on down to item number three, which is ordinance nine seven one. First reading, another vacation, vacating a portion of dedicated public utility easements on lot seventeen X Z and sixteen X A of block fifty-two. James?
Thanks, Mayor. That can be repetitive, but just the case, I'll read this for the record. This is first reading of ordinance number nine seventy-one. An ordinance of the town of Pagosa Springs vacating a portion of the public utility easements on lots seventeen X Z and sixteen X A of block fifty-two of the town side of Pagosa Springs. So, this is coming before you, really because of a error that staff made. This was back in the time where we were discussing the width of utility easements needed to accommodate fitting all the utilities needed to serve properties. Typically, most, through, I participated in sort of March mid on the joint utility committee, which is kind of an ad hoc committee that meets on a regular basis and once a month to discuss generally projects in the community and coordinating efforts and just making sure all the utility providers are well aware and everything is going on so that there's, we kind of dot all the i's across all the t's and we're not missing anything and we're including everybody in those discussions. With that said, some of those discussions back in the day were related to width of our utility easements that were required when properties are re-plating. So, the original town flat of Pagosa Springs doesn't include any public utility easements. But as those properties were changed or modified, whether it's a lot consolidation and unconsolidation, boundary line adjustment, whatever that may be, whatever if it was a process of plating at that time, it triggers the dedication of public utility easements around the perimeter of the lot. Most utility providers want as much elbowed room as possible. And for new subdivisions, that makes sense when you're working over a blank slate. But when you're working downtown with these really tight lots, it's really hard to get more than five feet on your perimeter. Both curators, because that reduces the lot width, right? So, five feet is pretty much the maximum that everybody's comfortable with property owner because anything less than that is really approaching on the development ability of your property. And the five feet perimeter easements currently that are in place as part of a replating, excuse me, it's consistent with the five foot setback on the size of property. So, they don't inhibit the development ability of the property if you keep them in five feet. When we process this flat, we require seven and a half feet from this property owner as it replatted. We'd like to revert back to having these as five foot perimeter easements on the side of property bodies instead of the seven and a half feet. So, in essence, you're being asked to consider vacating two and a half feet of these two side easements, reducing them from seven and a half to five feet. Currently, there's no utilities installed in these easements, which is an important point to make. We don't want to vacate easement, obviously, if there's already utilities installed. We had verified that there are no utilities installed in the seven and a half feet utility easements that are associated with these lots and on this flat that's included in our packet. So, in essence, your consideration again is to vacate two and a half feet, does retain the five feet needed for public utility easement. And we do not see any negative impact to do so. We've included our comments under the approval criteria in your packet for your consideration and available for questions.
Questions for James? Anyone? Go ahead, Jeff.
More of a comment, I don't mean to hog the comment time here, but I want to point out something. James started this by saying staff made a mistake. And I just want to point out that that is the kind of thing that illustrates that we have a good, high-functioning local government. When they make a mistake, they fess up to it and they correct it, they bring it to us, they don't hide it. I just want to thank you for that, James.
Yeah. Anybody else? Before I open this up for public comment? Okay, would somebody like to make public comment on this particular first reading ordinance? I don't see any hands. And not seeing any, then we'll close it for public comment. And the chair will accept a motion on ordinance nine seventy-one. Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve first reading of ordinance nine seven one. An ordinance of the town of Pagosa Springs, vacating two and a half feet of the public utility easement along the northern property boundary of lot seventeen X Z, block fifty-two, and two and a half feet along the southern property boundary of lot sixteen X A, block fifty-two.
Second. We have a motion, a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bergon? Aye. DeGraff?
Aye.
DeGuys?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Pitcher?
Aye.
Posey?
Aye.
And Mayor Holder?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on down to item number four, and this is approved with the parks recreation department's intention of purchase. Derek?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. I bring forward you approval for the purchase of a skidster for the parks department. As you know, in the two thousand and twenty-two budget, you approved line item fifty-one seventy-seven four fifty for the parks department, excuse me, five fifty, for the parks department to purchase a skidster for the spending limit of forty-five thousand dollars. So, staff put out an invitation bid, we received four bids back for that skidster. One came in within budget, the three were over budget. So, staff is recommending to purchase the Cabota skidster from Swag Incorporated, which is located in Bayfield, for forty-one thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-six cents, which is costing thirty-seven hundred dollars below budget. The skidster specs out to exactly what the parks department is looking for and a nice piece of equipment to add to this one.
Questions for Derek?
What's the lead time?
That's a great question. I have spoken with Swag. They can't, they can't promise me an exact date. I'm hoping that the next month or two, and so are they. But obviously, that's what any piece of equipment nowadays, whether you get older, any large piece of equipment, should it, it is delayed. But that's why staff obviously got on this as soon as they possibly could to get in front of you so we could get approval first.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
I have a question for council. Is this an appropriate thing for us to consider? We approve a line item, they're, they're quite capable of making this decision. Why do we even need to weigh in on this? Do we, do we not trust the town manager to make the best decision for the town?
We discussed this, actually, when we, one time, the first thing, two years ago? Yeah, we were discussing the policy because.
This is the time.
Right, and I, I feel like, Sherrod Pierce, you kind of, I remember it was like, we set the number at like twenty or so?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five about the formal bid and you know. Yeah, that we still wanted it to come before us. I kind of remember, that's how I remember that discussion going down. But I agree, I had the exact same thought while I was presenting this, you know.
What are governments accorded? And by definition, that means strategic. We do strategy and the town manager handles tactics. This is a tactic.
Okay, any other discussion?
I would certainly be open to revisiting that conversation.
I would like to do that. The purchasing policy needs to be rewritten, I think.
I don't think that'd be a bad idea. You can go ahead and revisit it and see what would come up, but.
In the meantime, I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
I move to approve the purchase of the Cabota skidster from Swag Incorporated for the quoted price of forty-one thousand, two hundred eighty-six hundred dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Bergon? Aye. DeGraff?
Aye.
DeGuys?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Pitcher?
Aye.
Posey?
Aye.
Mayor Holder?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance nine seventy-two, first reading of schedule. Time, date, location, and place of posting of regular town council meetings, April.
Thank you. So, for the recognition of ordinance identifying town council regular meeting dates, locations, times, and agenda of those requirements. We do this every year, it's in our charter, we have passed an ordinance. Let everybody know when our meetings are going to be. At this point, we are keeping them at five o'clock on the first Tuesday, third Thursday, every month. Unless there's fourth Thursdays, uh, Friday Thursdays, then it goes to the fourth Thursday of the month. The meetings will be held here at town hall. And as you saw last time, whoever's at Zoom will work on that. We hope it does and the internet continues, but if it doesn't, you know, we need to continue the meetings. So, there is language in there to let people know that, that although we are going to do our best to, to broadcast these meetings to the public and ask them to participate that way, if the internet goes down, that's out of our control, we'll continue with our business. Also, the agendas will be posted on our, on our town's iCampus civic web. And people can find them there or we'll also post them down the stairs in the town hall like we always have them. Are there any questions?
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, and this doesn't prohibit us at all from changing a time or a day of the week, we still have that flexibility. Right, so anything, so this would be considered our regular meetings that first, and those are when we're going to have regular business. If it changes by any date, then it just becomes a special meeting. Yeah, but we can, we can change it. And if you decide, the council decides as holy we'd like to do it and working it every day or something, you know, every day, then we can, we can redo the ordinance to change that, that's something we want to keep into the plan.
Other questions? Discussion? Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment? Close for public comment. Chair will entertain a motion.
Actually, I do have one other comment before I open the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
As far as engagement with folks and like getting involved with council, if there are any barriers with the time or place and scheduling of the meetings, I would love to know about them so that we can address them to hopefully get more engagement from the public in terms of being on council and being part of the team.
I'm sorry.
Anyways.
We've already seen that, you know, since going and broadcasting via Zoom, I mean, look, we have more people on the Zoom call than we really ever had in seats, which is great.
Okay.
Yeah, just addressing if there's any other barriers, we can address that. But anyways, I do move to approve the first reading ordinance nine seven two, identifying town council, regular meeting dates, locations, fact, and agenda of those two requirements.
Ben? Didn't you second that?
No, yeah, but I will now, second.
Well, I heard a second, but it was on our comment, I guess.
Exactly.
Alrighty, so we have a motion, a second roll call vote.
Councilmember Bergon? Aye. DeGraff?
Aye.
DeGuys?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Pitcher?
Aye.
Posey?
Aye.
Mayor Holder?
Aye.
Okay, let's go on down to ordinance nine seventy-three, which is first reading, calling for the two thousand and twenty-two regular election, April.
Thank you. Yeah, so ordinance nine seventy-three is an ordinance calling for the two thousand and twenty-two town of Pagosa Springs regular election to be held on April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two as a male ballot election. So, this is strictly just calling the election itself. It will be from seven AM to seven PM. That's when you can, you can drop your ballots off earlier if you want. The ballots will go out in early April? Nope, early March, sorry. I don't have my calendar for me. There are going to be three council seats and a mayor's seat available on that ballot. And I will be designated as the official election, or the election official for that. Any questions on that?
Any question? Go ahead, go.
Can you tell us who's returned ballots or returned packets for rest of the seats? So far, we do have a return for a mayor's seat by our council member, Sherrod Pierce. We have a return from council member Bergon and council member DeGuys. And another one for, for Mr. Jared Williams, who was, was one of the appointed candidates. Probably the last time we, when we appointed him, uh, council member Posey. So far, that's about.
No others? Okay.
Hence the barriers comment.
Yeah, any discussion for council? Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. I'm in, I don't see any hands, so close for public comment, except now I will accept a motion. Go ahead, Matt.
I move to approve ordinance nine seven three, first reading, calling for the two thousand and twenty-two town of Pagosa Springs regular election to be held on April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two as a male ballot election. Second.
We have a motion, a second roll call vote.
Councilmember Bergon? Aye. DeGraff?
Aye.
DeGuys?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Pitcher?
Aye.
Posey?
Aye.
And Mayor Holder?
Aye.
Item number seven is Southwest opioid regional council intergovernmental agreement and voting representative. Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At its meeting on November second, two thousand and twenty-one, council approved resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash eighteen, which approved the statewide opioid settlement agreement. If you recall, this is an effort that came into play through the Colorado Attorney General's office. This was a settlement with the Big Pharma companies to essentially agree not to bring an individual suit and to sign on to the statewide M O U. As a result, the town is able to participate in a regional council that will receive some regional funding as distributed through the statewide formula. We're also supposed to get, based on our population, I think about fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars out of that settlement. The regional coalition or council, which is Region Seventeen, includes Archuleta, La Plata, Montezuma, San Juan, and Dolores counties, as well as municipalities within those counties and the tribal governments. If we want to participate in any of that regional programming, we will need to sign on to this intergovernmental agreement. La Plata County has agreed to be the fiscal agent for the region for the time being. And as the only incorporated municipality in Archuleta County, the town would need to designate a voting representative to be on that council board. The, what they're calling it right now is S O R, which is the Southwest Opioid Response District. And I will try to answer any questions that you have, but essentially, this I G A lays out the terms under which the council will operate. The major goal is to develop a two-year plan that would design how the regional funds would be allocated over the next several years and the collaboration within the different governmental entities. There's a lot of options available for the region, including recovery, treatment options, educational opportunities. And funds can be used not just for opioid addiction treatment, but also for other substances as well. So, there's a lot of opportunities within this. As I mentioned, the town is only entitled to about fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars. So, some of the communities that are receiving such a small amount within the region may decide at a future date, you don't have to decide tonight, but you may decide to just put that money into the regional pool rather than trying to stand up our own programs with that kind of limited budget, but just something to keep in mind. So, before you tonight is approval of this I G A and then also designating a representative from the town. I can serve in that capacity unless someone on the council wants to serve in that capacity. Kind of up to you in terms of what your interest is, so happy to answer any questions that you have.
Just a comment, I think if you'd be an awesome representative, but why don't we go ahead? We've got an election coming up real soon. If you would serve that. If you would serve that right now, and then when we know who the council members are, then we can readdress this and maybe reappoint.
Sure.
But appoint you at this point in time. I don't know when their first meeting is, so.
Yeah, they haven't said it yet. I know they're on a timeline in order to get that two-year plan in place, but I'm happy to do that if that's okay with council, unless there's a council member that wants to, you know, serve immediately.
Okay, any discussion on this? Then, do we need, yeah, do we need a motion on this one? We do, don't we?
Yes, just to approve the document, which it says MOU, I don't know why I broke that. It's actually an intergovernmental agreement. So, yeah, it'd be an intergovernmental agreement for the regional council.
I'll accept the motion. Go ahead, Jeff.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement for the regional opioid council and designate our town manager, Andrea Phillips, as the town's representative to the council.
Second. We have a motion, a second, we'll call them.
Councilmember Bergon, aye. DeGraff.
Aye.
DeGuys.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Pitcher.
Aye.
Posey.
Aye.
Mayor Holger.
Aye.
Okay, now we're moving down to an executive, possible executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statute, section twenty-four dash six dash four zero two four B, for conference with town attorney to receive legal advice on citizen-led petition for the ballot question A to impose a hundred and fifty dollar per month fee on non-homeowner occupied licensed short-term rentals for the purposes of workforce housing. Do we want to go into executive session?
I'm going to recuse myself from this one in the next ten seconds.
Okay. Anybody else?
Do we want to? I don't know that I have any burning questions that can't be asked in a public meeting.
Okay, I have questions, but I, I don't, I don't know that. I've never gone into an executive session before, so I'm a little bit out of my comfort zone here. I don't know exactly when you step in today and when you don't. I did have some questions, but I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate for an executive session, but I just don't know.
Okay.
I mean, I think that we should go into executive session and just hear what our attorney has to say on the matter, and then we can make a little bit better decision.
Okay, well, we're talking about possible legal issues, obviously, that may have to do with a petition and what the regulations are according to charter and state statutes and all that other stuff. So if somebody would like to make a motion, I will accept that.
I'll make a motion. I move to enter executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statutes, section twenty-four dash six dash four zero two four B, for conference with town attorney to receive legal advice on citizen-led petition for ballot question A to impose a hundred and fifty dollar fee on non-homeowner occupied license for term rentals for the purposes of workforce housing.
Second, do we have a second? Second. We do have a second. Any further discussion on this? Then, we'll call them, please.
Councilmember Bergon, aye. DeGraff.
Aye.
DeGuys.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Posey.
Aye.
Mayor Holger.
Aye.
Okay, we need to go into executive session. Once we go into executive session, Maddie, you're going to have to repeat the motion. Okay, then we'll have to identify everybody who's in executive session. Now, I think you can go ahead and move on, right?
Yeah, we're going to go into.
Yeah, let's go into executive session. Time is six twelve PM according to this clock.
Recording stopped.
And Sherri, there's a link that I sent, a new link for you.
Yes, I'm getting it there right now.
Do we need to log out of the Zoom meeting?
Yeah, I think you do need to log out of this one, right?
You guys are, you're not going to log into the other one, so you can just close your screen. Maybe you should be, I'll just make sure there's your little picture.
Can I give a little show real quick before we actually go?
No.
Would you guys, would you guys send a pic and sell it and bring it back?
Yeah, can we do that?
Yeah, it's right there in the kitchen.
Progress.
Okay, we are now back in session, and the public, many of them who were on Zoom are still with it, which is a good thing. And so now, we need to go on down to this item concerning a ballot initiative. And so it'll be item number nine, and reviewing or discussing ordinance nine seventy-four, the first reading of the old charter amendment for short-term rent for workforce housing. So Andrea, I'll let you introduce this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, this is ordinance number nine seventy-four, series two thousand twenty-two. It's an ordinance submitting a charter amendment to the registered qualified electors of the town of Pagosa Springs to be held at the regular municipal election on April fifth, two thousand twenty-two, as a mail ballot election, setting the ballot title for proposed amendment to the home rule charter initiating a workforce housing fee for short-term rentals amounting to at least one hundred and fifty dollars per month for each permitted bedroom, with all fees dedicated to creation and sustainability of workforce housing aimed at households earning less than or equal to one hundred percent of area median income. Okay, so for everyone's information, the town clerk received a citizen-led petition with the appropriate number of signatures. That question is in the body of the ordinance, which you would be setting through this ordinance. You would be setting that ballot question title, it would be ballot question A. Procedurally, the petitioner did receive the appropriate number of signatures per state statute that could put this question onto the ballot, so it has been certified. For the public's information and clarity, this, if this were to pass, the fee would only be assessed for short-term rentals within the town limits. So this would not impact any of the short-term rentals that are outside of the incorporated area of the town. The way that it is written is that it would be a charge of a hundred and fifty dollars per month for each permitted bedroom, except those who are occupied by the owner at least nine months out of the year would not be subject to the fee. Just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that. So it would only apply to non-homeowner occupied short-term rentals within the town limits. The way that it's written is that it would begin, if approved, the collection of those fees would begin June first of two thousand twenty-two. And the petitioner did write that the fees would be utilized for workforce housing for households earning no more than one hundred percent of the area median income. So the purpose of this ordinance is really procedural in nature, and that is to essentially pass an ordinance that recognizes that the citizens that brought this forward had enough signatures to put this on the ballot. Our municipal election is April fifth, and it is a mail ballot election, so this would be a question that would be referred to the voters. And with that, I will try to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Andrea? Okay, let's open this up for discussion. Who wants to start?
Don, I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Sherri, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. And it may be more for April, but how many signatures were required to get this on the ballot?
So there were fifty-six, I believe, fifty-six signatures required.
And that's based on a percentage of the voters in the last election?
Yeah, that's correct. There were eleven hundred and fifteen registered, yeah, eleven hundred and fifteen registered voters in the town as of the last election, and they had to get five percent of those, of that amount.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion?
Is it time to say these things before the public? I just, I just want to say that we obviously have to pass this and allow it on to the ballot, but I will inform everyone right now that as citizen Posey, not as town council member Posey, but as citizen Posey, under my First Amendment rights, I will oppose this and campaign against it because I think it's an absurdly bad long-range amendment to add to our town constitution.
Okay, another conference? Go ahead, May.
Add that, you know, we had an opportunity to be at the table with people running this petition. We could have written in a way that was palatable for us. I would have chose not to.
Okay, anybody else? Sherri, anybody?
Sure, Don, I fully recognize that we have to put this on the ballot, we're required to, but I'm really concerned about how this opens our community for lawsuits and the cost that that could bring to our community when we could be using those funds to better work on workforce housing, which is what this group wants. And I'll just say that for now, I may say something later.
Okay, anybody else? Well, I will echo also that this is something that I will be voting for simply because that's part of our, that's part of state statute. When a petition legally comes in, we need to go ahead and seriously consider it, but also move according to law. But I oppose the way it's written. The town council spent hours and hours, received a lot of input from the public, and tried to make the best decision, and I think we made a good decision, whether it's best or not, about how to deal with regulations on short-term rentals. And that took a lot of thought. And one of the things that was considered was this type of fee, and we chose not to look at it. And so I think it raises a lot of issues if it passes, and I would hope that the general public would go ahead and come out in record numbers for this election and vote their belief. Now, they may not agree with me. I'm going to vote against it. If anybody talks to me about it, I will tell them why I oppose it, just like councilman Posey, just like Jeff. Okay? So I just want to make that clear, and I just hope the public gets well-informed and does not listen to rhetoric that maybe someone is deceptive, maybe on both sides. So let's search for the truth and what we believe is best for this community. Anybody else?
Can I say something else real quick?
Yes, Sherri.
Mayor DeGuys, I respect your comment about that we could have worked with these people to make something that was more palatable, but given what this turned out to be and the work that we put into it before, I don't think anything along this vein would be palatable to me. I just don't think this is a fair fee to be set. The council has already set short-term rental fees to be used for workforce housing, so this is like doubling up those fees. And I think there were things that weren't taken into account, like the people who have commercial properties who are paying commercial tax rates, and now they're going to be having to pay these fees on top of those. So I just, I don't see how this could have worked out or it would be palatable to me, but I do respect your opinion.
Thank you, Sherri. Anybody else on council? Okay, this is Norman, and it's first reading, and it's one of those issues that people have opinions. I already see hands raised, so let's open this up for public comment. And we'll start with folks who are attending by Zoom, and the first one is Alec Harris.
Harris.
Okay. Alec, if you want to unmute, state your name for the record, and I think that's your name right there.
Oh, hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I had raised my hand earlier, so I wasn't sure. This is my first Zoom meeting for this council. I didn't quite understand when you guys had left for the executive session where you were, I thought, I didn't understand what was going on, I thought it was over, but now I kind of, I kind of figured it out.
Sorry.
Because now you're talking about it, and I thought, for some reason, I thought we weren't going to hear anything about it, but that's obviously not the case. I'm totally against what's going on. I think it's an injure reaction from one citizen who's, I just don't think this is the right approach to solving the issue. I'd like to hear, but I think it's on the citizens to vote and to maybe drive, advertise a counterpoint to this and just see where, what happens, what, how, what direction it's taking, because I do pay attention to a lot of this issue, and it sure seems one side is the harm, but we'll see what happens.
Okay, we'll find out. Next one is Judy, I can't see the.
Prisandine.
Where is it?
Prisandine.
Anyway, if you pronounce your last, Prisandine, I guess.
Prisandine, yes.
Okay. Go, go, go. Go ahead, Judy.
You did good. Okay, well, I have several questions. First, I'd like to know if y'all operate under a type A general law city.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
I would like, I would like to know if the city of Pagosa operates under a type A general law city.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to engage with public comment, let me direct and answer the question.
Okay, at this point in time, at this point in time, Judy, this is just for public comment and.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I have a number of concerns. One is whether or not the fifty-six members on that petition were validated and the method by which they were validated. The other thing I would like to say is, has the city figured out the plan for inspecting and collecting a hundred and fifty dollars per bedroom should this pass? The other thing I'd like to say is that this feels very much like a Robin Hood plan of taking from some and giving to others. And I appreciate your service to the city. I serve in a city in Texas, and I understand the position you're in. I appreciate that you have a certain amount of governing laws that you must act upon, and I respect that, and hopefully the citizens can do something about this before it has to come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions, but it means if, for it to come across, I don't want to answer questions if I'm not going to do whatever direction from you or other members of the council.
Wow, you're giving me some power. Okay. Thank you. So that particular question, did you hear that? I didn't hear it clearly.
The town question, your question, Mayor? Yeah, she asked, we're a type A general law town, and my answer to that would be Colorado municipalities are bifurcated into two separate categories. One's a statutory town, and one's a home rule municipality governed by a very similar or different set of statutes that are overlapping the statutory towns, and we're a home rule municipality.
Okay, thank you for that, and that's something I didn't know in that detail. Okay, let's go on down to Liz Stice. Go ahead, Liz, you can unmute. Give us your. Go ahead, Liz, you can unmute, give us your comment. You're still very low. Liz, we cannot hear you if you're speaking. I'm sorry, Liz, we, we still can't pick you up at all in here. So Liz, would you see maybe on your end, we're gonna go to the next public comment, and would you see on your end if you can do something to actually come back in and speak to us? Thank you. Let's go on down to the next, and the next one is Kathy Henson. Go ahead, Kathy.
Um, hello, I'm wondering if you can tell me how many permitted STR properties there are in the town of Fugosa.
I think that's, we do have, on that record, 151.
Okay, thank you.
You got you up. Okay.
The previous caller had a couple more questions that she didn't answer. She asked about the signatures of petition and how they were validated and...
Oh, okay, um...
I don't think you answered that.
So if you wanna come back in, I don't remember.
This is not a, we don't have to do a question and answer.
Yeah, we don't have to.
Okay.
It was just, I think the, the first question she asked was the most important. Thanks.
She just wondered about that, but you answered this lady that just asked a question.
Yeah, we could, that could be followed up with outside of what's happening right now as far as public comment goes.
Okay, next public comment. And this was Latrice Bryant. Go ahead and unmute. You're still muted. Yeah, it looks like it's on your end, ma'am. You need to unmute on your end, because we can't hear a thing.
Start on, unmute, not if you're on a computer, but if it starts, I think it's star six. Yeah, can you click on it and say Ask her?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, we've got some kind of technical difficulty, I'll take either on your end or our end, so if you will try to correct that. Next hand.
Liz Stice again.
That's right.
Liz Stice.
Liz Stice. Yeah, that's totally agree, yeah.
All right, all right, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. There's, there's an issue on the, I was on my cell phone and there's an issue on that, but, um, yes, again, I think all of you guys appreciate your service as well, and I just wanna speak out and say that, that I think that this ordinance that's being proposed is not, is very misguided and not a good ordinance. Uh, I do not think it will help fix any of the housing issues, I think there's many other ways to address housing issues that, that could be explored by the town of Fugosa Springs, and I think it will very unfairly penalize short-term rental owners that may, you know, be, be either put out of business or be forced to take their properties off the market. And in a, in an economy that's very tourism-based and such, I think that that's gonna hurt, you know, many businesses, it'd just hurt the economy of Fugosa Springs and all, you know, everyone's gonna be affected, the workforce, the property owners, the businesses, you know, everybody's gonna be adversely affected by this, so I'm very opposed to this ordinance.
Thank you, Liz. Anybody else who's joining us by Zoom, if you'd raise your hand? Okay, I don't see any more hands, so we'll go to the members of the public who are still around.
Hope we got a couple more that just popped up.
There are comes two. Okay, Margaret Eagle.
Yes, so I'm understanding that we're not really allowed to ask questions, I'm just wondering if on the ballot it will be explained as to where is this money going to, who, who is going to receive this money, and what are their qualifications to be handling housing for anyone? Will, will that kind of thing be stated, or is that going to be something that we can ask at another point?
Some of those decisions, some of those specific decisions about how this is going to be managed have not been made at this point in time. There, it's a very general ballot language, and ballot language, and try, we try to keep it as simple as possible to go ahead and state a summary, if you will, but there are a lot of things that will need to be worked out later.
So it'll let, it'll let us know if, if it's going to be a government entity handling this or a personal entity? It, it seems just very strange.
That, that, those decisions will have to be made if this passes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I see another hand. David Richard. Thanks a lot. I'm glad we got some people here.
Hey, guys, can you, can you hear me on my side?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, so David Richard, property owner there in Fugosa, just want to, and I think most of you guys have actually seen emails from me over the course of the last couple days, want to obviously voice my objection to the ordinance. Um, you know, this in no way begins to solve the problem of housing affordability in the town of Fugosa Springs. Um, the reality is that the way that gets solved is through density and incentives. Uh, and so until the town is willing to put something on the ballot that talks about density and incentives, uh, this is simply money that's gonna go to a pot and drive actually people to leave the STR market and, and lower housing inventory and really just turn Fugosa into Aspen. So that's my sense on all of this, and just wanna express that opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. Okay, anybody else who's joining us virtually? Okay, I see another one, Kathy Henson.
Hi, some of you have heard from me today too, and I wanna thank those of you who responded, I really appreciate that. Um, I had asked how many STRs there are in the town because I was curious about how much revenue is expected to be gleaned. If the average STR has two bedrooms, you might get, you know, $45,400. You can't buy a Jeep with that these days, so I, I just think this is a very divisive move. The STR community is already pretty villainized by the county by P.O., P.O.A., and less so I think by you folks, but I just have to say, I don't think moves like this are worth the damage that they're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, anybody else? Okay, now I'm gonna go over to folks in the room that I'd like to make a comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. Phil, that's a 446 Loma Street. So thank you all for your comments, and thanks to the, the public for their comments. Um, I was involved in the petition drive along with other members of Fugosa Housing Partners, uh, which is a volunteer nonprofit. It wasn't something done lightly, and I think you all know that, I think you all heard repeated appeals to this body to please sit down and work with us, to come up with something that, that we can all live with. Didn't get that response that we were hoping for, didn't get the ordinance come from the council, which we were hoping for. We were, we were really hoping that, that this body would, would create something similar to this. Last July, when Councilmember Posey was sitting on the planning commission, he made a motion to charge a $6,000 per year fee for short-term rentals. That was unanimously passed as an, as a recommendation to you, and you all knew about that. What PHP has come up with is somewhat less than what the planning commission recommended, but not terribly less. Uh, it would, it would generate somewhere in the same, in the same ballpark of, of health for our workers. People are very concerned about short-term rental owners. I'm very concerned about the people who are getting evicted from their homes that they've been renting for 30 years and have seen those homes turn into short-term rentals. After the July vote by the planning commission, we were hoping the council would grab that, grab that recommendation and run with it. Didn't happen, but we've thought this through pretty carefully, and we think it's a good compromise between what the planning commission recommended and what the short-term rental owners probably would, would endorse. A funny thing happened to me when our kids left home and we had extra bedrooms in our house, we decided we're gonna do a bed and breakfast. And so I went down to the assessor's office and asked him about it, and the, the assessor said, "Well, if you open a bed and breakfast, you'll pay commercial property tax on your house." I said, "Really? Four times what we've been paying for property tax?" "Yep, if you open a bed and breakfast, you're gonna pay four times the property tax." Well, we calculated out, we'd have to rent our bedrooms for 50 days of the year to pay that difference in property tax. But there's a whole industry that has, has done and run around commercial property tax. Instead of opening bed and breakfasts, they call them vacation rentals, and they pay a quarter of what the bed and breakfast would have to pay for this very same service. Oh, there's a difference, bed and breakfast serves a breakfast, vacation rental is not allowed to serve breakfast. But I think what we wanna do is give this industry that did and run around our taxing system, we wanna give them the chance to contribute to the community the same way our bed and breakfast would contribute to our community. And, and we think they should embrace that, they should want to, they should want to support our community the same way they would if they were a bed and breakfast. And so I hope you don't go out and tell people not to vote in favor of this charter amendment, I hope you don't do that, and I'm glad that you're looking like you're going to put this on the ballot, as you, as you're legally required to do. But I do hope you see the value in letting this industry make their fair contribution to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, any further discussion? Chair will entertain a motion. Go ahead, Ben.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve first reading of ordinance 974, proposed charter amendment for short-term rental fee for workforce housing.
Second. We got a motion in the second, we'll call a vote.
Councilmember Bergon? Aye, but I would just like to say that I do have serious concerns about certain vulnerabilities with this passing. DeGraff?
Aye.
DeGuys?
Aye.
Pierce?
Um, with a heavy Aye. Posey?
Despite my having suggested that there should be a $6,000 fee, which could be quickly replicated when it was no longer needed in this amendment, is a permanent expansion of the town amendment and the town government for socialized housing, and I think it's one of the worst things I've ever seen to put in the DNA of our town, under, under advice of council, I vote aye.
Mayor Volker?
You heard what I had to say, I vote aye. Okay, that takes us down to just public comment at the end. We are at the end of this particular meeting, we have one more short meeting to address, but any public comment? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Oh, unmute, go ahead, Ben. Sorry.
I just have to comment on this again, and I feel like it was a...
Can you see it?
Yes, Henry Mayshu, I feel like it was a slap in your face to have this come the way it did to you after you've taken measures already this, this past year, and for them not to wait and give it some time for those measures to go into effect and to see what, what we can do in the future, so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, council comments and suggestions for upcoming agenda items. Go ahead, Ben.
Um, you know, I don't know, because last year, the year before, we had a stream of deep conversation on sidewalk shoveling. I just won't say that our sidewalks are bad shape as far as, you know, we haven't even had that much stuff.
You know, I think this was, along with that, I know they are, but the way the weather was and the way the ice formed, I don't know. Now you gotta go out and chip the sea knot out of it.
Shovel rifles.
Yes, and you would have to do that. If you didn't, then it would get smashed down, now you had an ice skate on. So it was a tough year, all right, so, but I think, I've seen the crews out working their tails off, so. Anyway, I agree, I just don't know about you.
Can I ask this to clarify, are you talking about this one the town is responsible for? Or private?
Private, private problem.
So it's an enforcement issue?
Kind of on a similar vein, I just wanted to say thanks to Public Works and all the guys, like, you know, we haven't, we haven't been pounded with snow like that in a while. Everyone who was out, I mean, you know, I hear the plows go by my house at 3:00 a.m., 5:00 a.m., and like, I just wanna give props to those guys for working their tails off during that 10-day storm. We need to...
I agree with that completely, but I'm impressed with how quickly they jump on it.
The way I had to stay on it, I think that, that's the other part is, it's one thing to work all night, but then to be, to have to do it day in, day out, day in, day out, just requires commitment, so I just really appreciate what those guys did.
I'll pass that on, and I know Martin's listening, so.
Okay, anything else?
Sherry has a comment.
Oh, Sherry, go ahead. Thank you, I don't look at the screen, Sherry, I'm far.
No, it's fine, I waved and waved earlier, but didn't get your attention, so, um, you know, back to the old-fashioned Christmas, I just wanna say that, you know, Jenny and her staff did a fantastic job, Jenny was a great leader on that, but we had a lot of town staff pitch in, and it was really cool, kind of little community coming together to present that, and I'm really proud of our staff for that. And then, speaking of being proud, I'm really proud of our council for the way we handled the ordinance tonight that we really weren't in favor of, but we had to pass. It was a really difficult situation for us, but I'm really proud of you all.
Thanks, Sherry.
You know, okay, anything else? Okay, then the next town council meeting is February 1st, can you please, our last, is our last meeting, regular meeting of January?
Yeah.
What if we want to go?
Oh, you can, okay.
I remember something that January is the trial period.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, um, so I'll take a motion to adjourn, and then we'll start the other meeting.
Second.
Any objection? Sherry, you don't object, eh? Okay, pass would be enough actually.
No, actually, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Are we having a work session next week with the tourism committee? Are we having a work session, uh, next week with the tourism committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we are.
What?
Date is, that's Thursday, Thursday. Yeah, it is next Thursday, our regular work session time.
Thank you.
Okay.
No objections.
All right, so, now we'll convene the sanitation district board's special meeting. So, do, we don't need to take a roll again, do we?
Yeah.
Okay, can Nicole come back, or did she go home?
She said she might tune into the CRI show.
Might, no problem. Okay, uh, the meeting's been called to order, is there any public comment for the sanitation district? Okay, no public comment, let's move on down to the consent agenda, just one item. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to reapprove the consent agenda.
Second. Oh, in favor, uh, roll call vote, sorry.
Councilmember Lagun?
Aye.
DeGraff?
Aye.
Guys?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Posey?
Aye.
And Board Chair Holder?
Aye.
Okay, new business is April, you're on about the date, time, location, and posting for regular meetings.
Thank you. Um, so, this is, um... Sorry, this is, uh, resolution twenty-two-zero-one. This'll, this'll set our date, time, and location posting requirements of our sanitation district meetings. Um, so, we, similar to what we did in twenty-one, we'll have, uh, this'll be our first meeting. The next meeting will be every other month, on the first Tuesday, following a, a council meeting. Or prior to a council meeting, whatever you decide. Um, the agendas will be on the town's civic portal, um, as well as posted here at Town Hall. Um, and any other meetings that we do have all these special meetings. And they'll be held here at Town, uh, Town Hall. And people can, again, join by Zoom, but, uh, I don't wanna be on that, so... Any questions?
Okay, question? Okay, chair will entertain a motion. Go ahead.
Mr. Board Chairman, I move to approve resolution two-zero-two-two-dash-zero-one establishing dates, times, and location for regular board meeting.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Uh, Board Member Lagun? Aye. DeGraff?
Aye.
Guys?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Posey?
Aye.
And Board Chair Holder?
Aye. Now, I'll accept the motion, future.
So moved. Second.
Aye.
Aye? Yeah, okay. Okay, C.R., thank you so much.